Good evening and welcome to the 2021 Mamaronek School Board Candidates Forum. My name is Peggy Jackson. I am the co-president of the League of Women Voters of Larchmont in Mamaronek with Alice Burnick. Our mission is to empower voters and defend democracy. The League of Women Voters is nonpartisan and neither supports nor opposes any of the candidates. The candidates forums we organize provide vital information to the voting public. In addition to the candidates forums, our other activities include sponsoring local students each year to participate in the State League's Students Inside Albany program, hosting speakers at our annual luncheon and other events, contributing our local candidate information to the Vote 411 Voters Guide, welcoming new citizens at Naturalization Court and encouraging them to vote, registering voters and keeping you informed via our LWVLM.org website, our Facebook page and informational e-bests. We would love for you to become a member and an active participant in our local league. Even if you have just a few hours of time, there's a place for you in our league. Although our name reflects our roots in the women's suffrage movement, we welcome members and volunteers of all genders. Please join us. Turning our attention to the Mamaronek School Board election, this year there are eight candidates vying for three positions on the board. Because of the large number of candidates, we've divided them into two separate forums and we hope you will view both of them. Unfortunately, two of the candidates will not be appearing. Candidate Josh Lawler informed us that he would not be able to participate due to restrictions imposed by his employer. Candidate Patrick Roman did not reply to our invitation to participate. Appearing in our two forums in alphabetical order are the following candidates: Sally Cantwell, Arianna Cohen, Michelle Metz, Laringle, Lolo Mitchell, Leela Mitra and Andreen Smith. In addition to being aired by LMC Media, these candidates forums will be made available for viewing on both their website, LMCMedia.org and the league's website, LWVLM.org. For further information, all of the candidates running have been invited to submit information about themselves to the league, which we will post on our website. The election of school board members and the vote on the proposed school budget for 2021 through 22 will take place on Tuesday, May 18th from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. In-person voting will take place at your local elementary school, except for the Chatsworth Avenue School. Because of ongoing construction there, the polling site for Chatsworth voters will be across the street at the Larchmont Avenue Church. There will not be a drop box outside of the polling sites. To vote by absentee ballot, you must first submit an application. Applications for absentee ballots will not be mailed to you this year. Instead, you may print them out by going to the school district's website, M A M K S C H O O L S dot org and clicking 2021 through 2022 Proposed Budget. If you are requesting an absentee ballot because you are concerned about contracting COVID-19, check the Temporary Illness or Physical Disability in Section 1. Absentee ballot applications must be received by the district on or before May 11th in order for a ballot to be mailed. However, registered voters may personally come into the district clerk's office at Mamaronek High School for an absentee ballot up to 4:00 p.m. Monday, May 17. All absentee ballots must be received by 5:00 p.m. on the day of the election, May 18. Before we begin, I'd like to thank the candidates for appearing this evening. I also want to thank LMC Media for their assistance with the forum and especially I want to thank our program's host this evening, Mike Witch. Mr. Witch, the Secretary of LMC Media's Board of Directors. He's a retired teacher from the Mamaronek School District. However, he does not live in the district and cannot vote on school district matters. And now I will turn this over to Mike Witch.
Thank you, Peggy. I'm honored to be asked to host. And as she mentioned, I am retired from the district and in the interest of full disclosure, Lolo Mitchell was one of my students one year, so it's good to see him again.
Likewise, sir.
And I have a lot of admiration for anyone who is running for a school board seat as a retired teacher and a taxpayer. I know how much time and energy goes into that volunteer job. So, as Peggy said, each of you will now have 90 seconds to give us an opening statement and I'd like to start with Lolo, please.
Thank you, Mr. Witch. Good evening. I want to thank the LMC TV and the League of Women Voters with helping us with organizing this event for each, for myself and my colleagues. So, my name is Laringle Mitchell, also known to Lolo as Benny. I'm a resident of the village of Mamaronek for 39 years. I also worked for the district for 22. I went to the Homics and MHS. I'm a graduate of 1993 at MHS. After leaving MHS, I went on to go to the University of Massachusetts at Amherst to study political science there, also played football there. Upon returning home, I took up, or I had, I was given the job of campus supervisor. And campus supervisor gave me a unique way of looking at the everyday needs of our students and helping them and supporting them. I also had different jobs, including substitute custodian, substitute teacher and substitute for special needs. Why I'm running? I feel that the unique perspective that I got through the many jobs that I was able to hold over those 22 years gives me a unique and tangible perspective to work with the board and to help the board see our, the needs and support our students in every which way. Also, I would like to bring together or improve communication between the students, the board itself and the students, the board itself and other parts of our community. Also, to continue our work in inclusion, diversity and equity. Thank you.
Thank you, Lolo. And next, Lili, you just joined us. Do you have your opening remarks ready to present?
My Wi-Fi is giving me trouble today of all days. Hi, everyone. My name is Leela Mitra. I've been in Mamaronek since 2005. And my parents are immigrants from France and India that chose this wonderful town to raise me and my two little brothers. I went through Central Homics and Mamaronek High School. And my brother also went through the system and I have, my youngest brother is currently at Homics. And, you know, since graduating from the district, I went to Fordham University and I had a lot of really great experiences where I learned that I really want to dedicate myself to public and direct service with people and I want to help them as much as I can. And, you know, I won't dwell on my experiences because, you know, I've shared them a lot and you can find them anywhere. But the point is I'm running because Mamaronek is my home and I want to try to give back to the community that helped raise me.
Thank you. Andreen, your opening remarks, please.
Thank you so much. I first want to say thank you to LMC TV and the League of Women Voters for inviting us to this important forum. And Happy Teacher Appreciation Week as well to all of our teachers. My name is Andreen Smith. I was born and raised in Jamaica in a small town that you've never heard of. And while we didn't have a lot, we had certain values that I think were very important to us. Those were family, community and education. My family moved to the Bronx when I was 13 and I graduated from Truman High School at the top of my class. It motivated me and encouraged me to exceed my own expectations and enroll at Stanford University, where I studied political science and African and African-American studies. I was privileged enough to study abroad in Paris, which motivated me to move there for a year and earn my MBA, which I did after school. And then I went on to Georgetown Law where I earned my law degree. And in terms of my career, I'm an attorney. I worked as a litigator and lobbyist for a major law firm first out of school and then transitioned to a role in government affairs at an insurance company. And now I'm managing counsel at a multinational bank in the city. Since moving to Mamaronek in 2016, because I found the same values here of family, education and community, I jumped right in volunteering to serve on the district enrollment task force and on the district equity team because I really valued the, the ability to just impact students in terms of what they do. I've always been engaged in youth and education issues. I sit on the Board of Directors of Girls in Westchester, which encourages girls to be strong, smart and bold. And I have just been focused on mentoring students, working as a youth director at my church, volunteering last year with the Larchmont Mamaronek Halloween Costume Drive, which I co-chaired to provide costumes to kids in our community and donate funds to Save the Sound. So I'm just very excited about participating in this forum this evening and sharing my wealth of knowledge with the community.
Thank you. The league has prepared eight questions and I will, I'd like the first response to come from Leela. The first question is this, Leela, what do you feel is the biggest issue facing our school district? And what prospective expertise or questions do you have about the matter that would help move the board forward in best addressing this issue?
That's an amazing question. I think my response, I'm definitely not alone in thinking that, you know, COVID is really a big, big issue for us right now. And I will say that I think that we've done a fantastic job at what we've done so far. We've really, you know, the fact that we can have our art students performing now is really amazing and we can't say that for the rest of the country necessarily. I think the issue lies in communication sometimes. I just, you know, I think it would be really great to streamline the communication between the teachers and the students and, you know, the board and other groups that are in charge, just because they are the people that are in the hallways and putting their lives at risks every day. So I think that I would really love to hear from them if I was on the board and if I was addressing this issue.
Thank you. Andreen, same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
No, that's okay. I have a similar response to Leela. I think recovering from the pandemic is going to take all of our resources. Over the last year, our teachers and our administrators have just been incredible getting us through the pandemic. And our students have lost a lot, but I feel like we've also gained a sense of community as well. My emphasis, I think, is on meeting the social emotional needs of our students coming out of that because they've been in relative isolation for the last year. And what does that look like in terms of their learning? What does that look like in terms of their relationships? And how are we going to help them combat the slide? There was a presentation at the school board a few weeks ago where they talked about the impact on our ELA scores across the elementary schools. And while there was progress in terms of narrowing the gap, it's still a huge gap. And there's a lot of difference in terms of students living in poverty versus those who are not students of different races. So I feel like that's a big issue that we need to put all of ourselves out there and ask questions of the community like what kind of programs and services can we put in place that will help impact that problem? And I'd love to see more of that.
Thank you. Lolo, the same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
No, I think in regards to what, what, what we need to work on, as, as I looked at the, the issues that I've watched over the last four or five board meetings, part of the issue is we're not really connected as well as we can be as a community in regards to the various pieces that make up our school system. So meanwhile, we, we, we definitely need to support our children, but the, the families are just as well as a part of the children itself. So what I'm looking to do is, as a town hall, is to try to open up the lines a little. You know, our board meetings, they're, they're very structured. They don't allow certain things to be spoke upon in certain ways. And with those town halls, we'd be able to get a little bit more feedback and get a little more, more, more communication, which can in turn turn into more trust and then in turn give people more comfortability to be able to approach the board on key issues. That would be my answer.
Thank you. The second question, I'd like to start with Andreen. Given the cultural, racial and socioeconomic diversity within the school district, how would you optimize the educational experience of each student?
Well, the pandemic has definitely surfaced a lot of issues regarding race and equity. And that's something that's near and dear to my heart. I serve on the district equity team, which is focusing on figuring out what some of those issues are and then developing recommendations. And ultimately, I hope implementing them to try to address some of those issues. So I'm definitely very interested in maintaining partnerships with the community, reaching out to different organizations and stakeholders who have just a keen interest in the success of our students and the success of our community, making sure we're asking about assessment levels, making sure we're focusing on training specifically for our teachers to make sure that they have the support that they need, they have the skills that they need to be able to address some of those concerns, looking at curriculum as well and figuring out how can we update and make sure that we modernize our curriculum so that students can see themselves reflected in it and understand that their history and their contributions to that dialogue. I know that was very important to me in high school. I didn't have that experience necessarily. And I'd love to see the students of Mamaronek have that ability and I feel like that's important. And it's something that's a driving passion for me, just making sure we're maintaining that level of commitment. And I think it ties into one of my key priority issues, which is just opportunities, building opportunities within Mamaronek, focusing on special education, learning gaps, focusing on issues across students who have different wealth levels and focusing, focusing on students by race as well to identify what are the specific needs of each of those communities and how can we impact them as much as we can. So I'm looking forward to that moving forward.
Thank you. Same question for Lolo.
I think right now, we're, the district is going in the right direction in regards to the equity team. What I, what I would look to do is just increase or include more people in it. Again, as I said before, some of the division, it, it, it is inhibiting us the ability to really combat some of the socioeconomic and racial issues that have plagued the, the, the community for quite some time. So again, what I'm looking to do is bridge gaps so that, again, we can look at the, the needs of every student and, and be able to meet the student where they are, because everyone's going to have a different narrative and a different story. So we need, we, we desperately need to, to have the same time, effort and energy towards each student so that we can meet them where they are and get the needs that they need to be able to, to achieve what they want to achieve.
Thank you. Leela, the same question for you.
Thank you. When, when it comes to this issue, I think we really need to be willing to reach out to the children because like you said, there's so many children and they all have so many different backgrounds and they were raised in so many different ways. And we have to be willing to reach out to them and promote the things that we have because Mamaronek has a lot of resources. It's not like we don't have resources, but it's really important to use them in the best way we can. And, you know, that means reaching out to students that we think might need a little extra help. We're students that don't have the confidence to sign up for an AP class because they don't think they can do it. So I think, you know, we need to be able to, you know, push our students because we know we can do it, but also slow down a little bit, especially with what happened with COVID. They're going to need us to slow down and support them on every step of the way.
Okay. The next question is about enrollment and Lolo, I'd like you to answer first. And the question is, what approach do you favor with our current enrollment situation?
Well, in regards to the enrollment, I just think that the, the current situation that we have is, is, is one that works. And I think that it's the best that we have right now. I know there's a lot of different viewpoints and, and, and ideas on it. But I think the current one is one that the district has right now is, is just fine.
Okay. Leela?
Yeah, I think the enrollment here is working. I think enrollment is an issue that's always going to fluctuate because we're always going to have more or less children over the years. So I think it's, it's good to have the enrollment task force as a group that can, you know, support us along the way and showing us the options we have that would allow for all children to get the best possible education in our district. So I trust their ability to help us find the best solutions and to adjust to those solutions.
Thank you. Andreen, same question.
I think I'd have to say that the topic is very complex and needs further analysis. I participated in the enrollment task force, which was stood up because of a crisis point, basically, where the community ultimately looked up and realized, oh my goodness, we might run out of space. What should we do? And as a member of the task force, we did a lot of work, I have to tell you, over months, just studying enrollment projections, doing a lot of research on demographics and figuring out what the different options were. And at the end of it, we eliminated a few as not being realistic from Mamaronek, but we realized we needed more information, more strategic data to help us decide the best route to take. And what I can say is that it's critical for me as a school board member, if I'm ultimately elected, to listen to the community. Neighborhood schools are very important here and we need to have the input of the community, figure out what works for them, what their priorities are, what are the costs? How is it going to impact transportation? What does it mean for parents who have kids in multiple schools? I want to be an active listener, but I also need to have the research and the data to ultimately make a decision because there's no one size fits all answer. So I just have to be grounded in my belief that I can do what the community wants by listening to them and asking questions so that there's the dialogue back and forth between the two of us. And I think that's what I'd have to say. We have to focus on what works best for the community. And ultimately, we need more information to decide that.
Okay, thank you. The league's next question is about budgets and Leela, I'd like you to answer first. The question is, if you had an opportunity to add to this year's budget, what would you, what would be your priority? And if you had to make further cuts, where do you think those cuts could be made?
Yeah, I think, I think they did a really good job with the budget this year and I'm not sure if I would further cut anything that they had decided to cut. What I would say is there was a decrease when it came to social services of about 10% or so. And I do feel like that is an area where we could have allocated a little bit more money just because with COVID, I think our children and, you know, our teachers, really everyone, need a lot more support. So the, the social services included social workers and helthlines and, you know, food and housing response teams. So it is something that I think especially right now is necessary.
Thank you. Andreen, same question.
Well, I guess in a hypothetical world where I had all the money available to me, I'd always want to put additional funds towards special education for our special learners. That's something that's near and dear to my heart personally. And I think that there is sometimes a lack of understanding and awareness there on the parent's behalf where school board members and the district ultimately can play a larger role in providing training, providing different supports in terms of social emotional learning. So that's something that I would definitely focus on in terms of money that falls from the sky and I could just allocate it as I see fit. I, I agree with Leela. I don't think I would cut anything either. The school budget this year, the increase is about 1.84% and it's towards the lower end in terms of Westchester County districts. I, I think they did a good job balancing the needs of our students, trying to go back to the level that they were before pre-pandemic, offering the sports and the different programs that they need, bringing on an additional social worker at MAS and a, a nurse because those are important needs in our community. And ultimately, we have to be responsible towards of those resources because we are trustees. We are, you know, we are endowed with that privilege of distributing funds across the district for our students and we have to do the best that we can by managing priorities. So I think as long as we're identifying the priorities that are important to the community and allocating funds that way and making sure we bring the community along every step of the way, not just at the end, but in the beginning to talk and make sure that there's trust and transparency, then that would be what's most important to me.
Thank you. Lolo, same question for you.
Yeah, I think I wouldn't really cut anything. I was actually very impressed with the, the ability for the, the board to come together with a budget and balance it and with a minimal increase in regards to tax revenue. As we look at our COVID situation, I would add in maybe more support in regard to our aides and which is actually in the budget, but more support and more front lines, people, campus supervisors, et cetera. Because again, our kids are coming back to school and it, this is the first time that they've seen actual in-person learning for some time. So these people are going to be some of the people that actually interact with them on a, on a daily and regular basis and that's very important. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily cut anything. I thought it was, in, in, like the others have said, in comparison to the other districts that, that we've compared to, I thought we did an excellent job with the minimal increase.
Okay. Andreen, the next question, if you would take it first. What characteristics do you value the most in our school district leadership?
I think active listening is very important to me and participation. I think it all ties in. When I talk about partnership, it first starts with communication, making sure that communication is a two-way street, that there's ongoing dialogue, that it's timely and it's targeted and that you're listening. So that's, that's a big priority, I think, for me. It fosters a sense of community that drew me here. And I want to make sure that we continue to prioritize that, making sure that we're always listening and always looking for opportunities to bring in new people, new partners, to expand the offerings that we have in our community. And I think if we do that, we will ultimately be even more successful than we are, than we are right now.
Thank you. Lolo?
Could you repeat the question?
What characteristics do you value the most in our school district leadership and why?
I would say dedication. Each of the people that I've had the chance to deal with, to work with within the last 22 years was definitely dedicated and spent their time, efforts and energy trying to do the best for every child, no matter what race background that child was. And with that, as we move forward, we can all go forward in, in the same direction in, in supporting and encouraging each of our, of our children. I also like to say, they, they were definitely very good listeners, also active listeners and, and definitely able to support each child.
Thank you. Leela?
Yeah, I'd have to say that, you know, I appreciate that the leaders in the district do react to people's needs once they're voiced. And, you know, that goes to a lot of different areas that we could discuss. You know, I really appreciate that, you know, the board meetings are now on LMC and they're posted online. It makes them really accessible because, you know, not, not everyone has the time to dedicate on those Tuesday nights. I love that there are those highlights posted now for those meetings too. So, you know, I think that when people voice things, it's really nice to see results come through eventually.
Thanks. Thank you. The next question is about students and mental health. And Lolo, I'd like you to answer it first. And it's this, given the rising rates of anxiety, depression and suicidality among children, what do you think should be the role of the school district in addressing students' mental health?
Well, I think the, the district has a, a very important part, as we've seen in our, in our post-COVID situation, of supporting each mentally. Within the budget is actual mental health counselor for the district that has been added, which I think is, is crucial. But I think we have to take a more hands-on approach and allow our specialists to really be able to work with each student in their, in their situation and being able to access and, and, and really foster an answer for our children who might be struggling as they come back into the school district.
Thank you. Leela?
Yeah, I think in a way this goes back to what I said about the budget. I think it just, you know, we have to make it a priority because we do have the resources. I think children should know that there are a lot of adults that have their back out there. There should be, you know, more social workers and counselors that they can talk to. And also, you know, teachers and aides, it's also, you know, really hard for them to be out there and they know that they're putting a lot at risk. And, you know, it's really hard to do your job or to be yourself when you don't feel safe. So I think really allocating the resources to make sure they feel supported mentally, emotionally, socially, whatever it may be, is really important here.
Thank you. Andreen, the same question.
I think the school has a critical role to play as a first line of defense, actually, in terms of students' mental health. I think we should be active participants and be proactive in terms of what we do because sometimes we're going to be the ones that notice the issue. When I say me, I mean teachers, more specifically, or administrators. They, they play a key role because they're very close to the students. They see them every day. They're going to notice certain changes and they have certain training that will help them to identify specific issues and problems. So I feel like we definitely need to be active participants there. And I think the board is trying. At the last board meeting, they spoke about several different programs that they plan to implement. For the fall, they're looking at implementing an after-school program that also involves mindfulness training for students. And they're looking at bringing in outside service providers to provide certain types of counseling to students regarding grief, regarding the pandemic, regarding different issues. These are key things that we definitely need and I support those programs wholeheartedly because I feel like that's a critical issue for us. We can't be successful if our students are anxious or depressed or suicidal. And so we need to make sure that they come to class available and ready to learn and feeling like they belong there. So I support all of those types of programs wholeheartedly.
Thank you. We've come to the, next to the last question. And Leela, if you'll answer first this question. What makes you the most qualified candidate?
That's a great question. You know, I think it helps a lot that I've been through this district. There's still teachers that I know and that I high-five and that I check in on. And, you know, it's, it's really great and I think it makes me really accessible and approachable when it comes to both students and teachers and parents. I'm really close to the district. And, you know, I've had a lot of experience when it comes to direct services and advocacy. My, my last field of work was in foster care. I was a caseworker for children in the Bronx at Rising Ground, which was the organization. And I, basically, my aim was to get them out of the foster care system as soon as possible. You know, prepare them for family court. And you know, I just wanna bring the same care and attention and insight that I've provided in my past experiences to basically what is my family, my community here. Um I would be really honored to hold this position and represent everyone in Mamaroneck and Larchmont.
Thank you. Andreen, that question, what makes you the most qualified candidate?
That's a great question. I think I bring passion and dedication. I bring um my career experience with me as well as an attorney. Focusing on policy issues, focusing on strategy development and implementation of complex initiatives. So I think I meld a lot of, both of the, the best of both worlds, basically. I bring that um professional aspect to it, as well as the personal in-depth, just personal touch type of approach. And I think what's very important to me is that I've always led by consensus. I've always been a team builder. And I think that is really one of the key characteristics of a successful school, school board member. Someone that's listening to others, someone that's open to admitting that they're wrong. And finding a compromise. It's sometimes it's not easy and it's not pretty, but it's that ability to be able to work together as a team. And I have that both from the personal side and also from the career side. And I'm just personally invested in Mamaroneck. I love this community. And I see some of the needs. I've heard some of the stories from families who have felt sometimes like they don't belong here. I've heard from a few families that have left the community. And that breaks my heart because I see the successes here and I see the strengths here. And I wanna be a part of the team that works together to address those concerns and brings everyone together so that we can work together as partners. I think partnership is so instrumental.
Thank you. Lolo, what makes you the best candidate?
You know, Mr. Wood, you talked about it before, a little bit about the difference in socioeconomics and race here. You know, Mamaroneck's a very unique place. And it's always been very dear to my heart, being that I, I moved here. The Homicide was my first school. Um as a, as a personal note, it, it gave me a future, a, a, a thought process that I could reach the stars. And I just wanted to be able to handle or hand that same hope to other students as they, and other families as they come into uh, uh, come into our district and, and learn about our district. As for my professional, or my background, again, as I mentioned before, I've, I've worked in a district. And I've kind of seen how the money allocation actually plays out. Okay, so whether it be from the needs from special needs, from the needs for the custodial staff, the needs to campus supervisors. Oh, eh, I've had the tangible ability to see that on a daily basis and how those things and what needs the, the students need. What needs the staff needs in order to be able to execute what the many things or the many visions that we might have. So I, I just, I'm looking forward, if, if, if elected, it just being able to, to work with people, to, to, to be able to come to a consensus. My job, my new job has, that's basically what I do as a case planner, is I have to be able to work with others in a teamwork setting. And being able to come to a consensus on many different things. So um my background there also has helped me in regards to conflict resolution and being able to, to see different opinions. Value those opinions, but also maintain my own integrity of what I believe.
Thank you. Okay, we've arrived at the last question uh that the League has come up for all of you. Uh Andreen, I'd appreciate it if you would answer this course first. What do you think the strengths of our district are?
Oh wow, there are so many friends here. I feel like the relationships would be number one for me. I have met some incredible people working on the Enrollment Task Force and the District Equity Team. People who are just passionate and dedicated and who don't necessarily have the same ideas or have the same viewpoints. But we're working together because we have the best interests of the students and the success of the district at heart. I think that's so amazing. I feel the emphasis on sports is excellent here. The emphasis on extracurriculars is just wonderful. And also, I think the emphasis on academic excellence. Everyone is just incredibly passionate about making sure that we are the best and we stay at the top of our field. And I think that's incredible. I'm looking forward to working with everyone to not just maintain that, but to look at developing a growth mindset and find out what can we do a little bit better? How can we improve experiences for all students across the district? And I feel passionate about that. I love, I love the pride here. I love the teachers here, the dedication and the participation, people staying late. Um working with students. I feel all of that is just amazing. And those are just strengths that we need to develop even further.
Thank you. Lolo, would you answer that question, the strengths of the district?
I've always looked at diversity as, as a strength. You know, within my personal being, also within working with various different students. I had the chance to really get to understand the way the world works in their mind. And not just from the standpoint of race and class and other things, but just thought processes of watching kids grow from you know, I, I was at the Homicide, watching them grow from young, uh, young adults to adults. And, and just championing their, their, their growth. So I, I, I looked at just the way we look at each other from different lenses. Being able to come together, whether it be in our extracurriculars, whether it be in our, our given buildings. And building bridges and building, and building relationships off of that. That's always something that's been very dear to me. And, and uh I hope to be able to continue to foster those relationships, just in a different role.
Thank you. And Leela, the same question, the strengths of the district from your point of view.
Yeah, um on a similar note, I just, I absolutely love how different everyone here is. They, you know, no one shares a similar background. And the friends that I made from this district, you know, both as a student and as an adult. Everyone is so, so different and they bring so much insight and experience. And at the end of the day, it all funnels down to a passion and a patriotism for Mamaroneck. You know, everyone can agree on that one thing, is that this is our home. And they defend it. And everyone comes back and everyone knows Mamaroneck, even if they end up leaving. Um so I think that's one of my favorite things is, you know, no matter how different we are, we can, we all have this town's best interests at heart.
Thank you. Peggy, I would just like to say thank you to each of the candidates. And uh I have so much admiration for each of you for the work uh that you are aspiring to do on the Board of Education. A very, very important job in our community. Uh Peggy, you have the last word for the League of Women Voters.
Thank you, Mike. I, I echo your sentiments. I think you're all extremely brave. I think you're all extremely intelligent and commend you for, for throwing your hats in the rings. That's fantastic. And I wish you all great, good success. I want to thank L M C Media for making this possible because without L M C, we couldn't have done it. And thank you, Mike, for hosting it for us. You are my hero. And um I want to remind everyone, please to vote. It's really important. So on the eighteenth of May, please go out and vote.